... Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson is absent. Councilmember Fleming is absent. Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Council President Escobar?
Here.
Please be advised that the notice of warning issued under the Open Public hearing Act has been complied with and satisfied in the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time of place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick as the file of the city clerk has been placed on the appropriate voting board in City Home and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely, the home news to group.
And by allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's reflection of Torres of Esteban is awareness of awareness month, and it is a reminder to all of us of the pervasive issue of issues that often happens behind closed doors. So today I would like to order the survivors, I call them martyrs, I want to mourn the victims, and reflect on ways that we as a community can continue to take important steps towards breaking the cycle of violence through community awareness, education, and comprehensive services and support for those suffering in silence. Thank you.
Move the minutes. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
But our members, the correspondent has been directed to the public departments?
Yes, Council President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Thank you. Your performance here is, then we're going into ordinance, ordinance portion of the second meeting. We have ordinance 092-401. It's an ordinance document and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2, 46, 4, Department of Police, this is in reference to some properties. Any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or comment on these particular ordinance? So before we open the floor for public hearing on these ordinance only, I would also ask Mr. Shawne to talk a little bit about these specific ordinance.
Yes, Madam Council, President Members of Council, this ordinance O-092-401 simply updates our section of the revised general ordinances that talk about the police department. As you all are aware, we used to be served by a director of police, now we have a chief of police. The ordinance didn't reflect either work, it's been amended to so that the chief is in place or the director. Some of the other sections just pulled up some language what we add to make it consistent.
Thank you. So at this time, we are preparing to open the public hearing on these ordinance only. We have up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any member of the public who wishes to address your counsel of police ordinance only, please approach your counsel.
Good evening, Council. Charlie Cradville of Brunswick, Brunswick today. I guess I wanted to ask why this is being done now?
Mr. Shawne?
I periodically review ordinances to make sure they are up to date. The police department is charged with that task, as well as the water department, and we cooperated, and finally came to bid that we introduced.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just to clarify, there's no change to the qualifications necessary to become the head of the department?
No, it's my understanding.
Okay. One suggestion. I think that we would all be better served if the police chief came to these meetings from time to time to give updates and information about what's going on in the department, both in terms of the crimes that they're investigating and also what they are doing to be better and to serve us. Would you be open to including that under, I guess, Section 1? You have the, you know, what they shall do. Could you put that in there and say from time to time, they shall come report to the city council on the department's activities or things like that?
Mr. Cradville, we have a good representation of the police department here at the meeting. Captain Hoover is here, so I'm pretty sure that there's anything that he has to be shared with the public. Captain Hoover is here, and I will too, so. So it's up to you. So at this point, we do have representation of the police department.
Understood. I think in the past, we've had situations come up where the representative has not been able to answer certain questions. I'm not speaking specifically about Captain Hoover, but I remember Sergeant DeFalco was here. We were talking about a quadruple shooting, and we weren't able to get current information on that because the appropriate personnel to answer the questions were not here. I would imagine the chief would have been able to answer that question about the quadruple shooting. And I think that, you know, frankly, the way the meetings are run currently, unless someone calls on the captain or the representative, they don't give any kind of report or they don't give any kind of update. I would like to see that done without people having to ask, and so I'm asking you to put in your ordinance that the police chief attends from time to time and give updates and information about the department's activities. And I don't see why that would be controversial. I think that that's what's done in many, if not most, other towns. And I think, given the role that the police play here and the seriousness of the violent crime problem, it would be entirely appropriate to do it here. Would you consider adding that to your ordinance?
I would speak for the whole, you know, for the whole council. I could ask a consensus, but I tell you right now that we don't have representation. But thank you for your comment.
Yeah, no disagreement, there's a representative here, and I'm sure if called upon, he'll do his best to answer any questions that come up, but again, I'm asking for proactive reporting.
And I can answer, you know, that I'm a consensus, I'm a, I am not a, I'm totally for the whole council. I'm a consensus in the future, that could be, but again, we have some, we have representation here, so I'm assuming for this example, just one person, we're seven, I'm consensus with the council.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you're going to pass the ordinance as is, but you're going to approach your colleagues and consider add, you know, supplementing the ordinance in the future?
In the future, you can see that.
Okay, I think it is needed, I hope you do that. Thank you.
Everybody else?
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, I would agree with Mr. Charlie Cradville due to where I have to say several times, due to where asked questions, due to where Captain Hoover is not available to answer any questions, due to where, just like you say, sometimes where what, questions will not be asked at now, due to where we wait later down the road and still continue waiting on questions to be answered by you or Captain Hoover, due to where I would like to see, that most definitely, due to where the head chief up here, New Brunswick, after what I'm seeing, due to where, like I said, honestly, I don't trust anyone really from New Brunswick Police Department after, like I said, what I'm doing, what they're hiding, and I will get to that, due to where when it's public comment, but due to where, what? Yes, I would like to see the chief here to answer, and answer, due to where, what certain laws are, due to where too many officers said did this, that's why, who's true, who's in charge of the training, due to where one officer will say, oh, no, this is the law, and no, another officer will say, oh, no, it's okay to do this, due to where, like I said, what, it's only been maybe about a little over a year that Captain Hoover has been with the meetings, due to where, what, he was trained by J.T. Miller, who surely wasn't a good captain either, but like I said, honestly, I had no trust in New Brunswick Police Department, but to get certain questions, questions answered, I agree with Mr. Cradville that we need head, someone head in charge here, due to where, like I said, too many officers have too many, saying too much, too many things on law, where one will say, okay, yes, this is the law, and someone else will say, this is the law, and as well as I told you, you councilmember, where I think you need to have a meeting and get together with your, your, your head people of police, due to where, wow, how you say this, ooh, an ordinance didn't pass through, due to where what, the New Brunswick Police Department said, oh, no, this is the law, just for example, due to where Mr. Anderson said, oh, there never was a noise ordinance, but ooh, does New Brunswick, does New Brunswick give out tickets to certain, I'm not going to say certain people, due to where, yes, I see more black people getting tickets for loud noise ordinance, where you said it, what, what was it? What, $400, $800 for loud, loud music? So that's one thing, I think, where you really need to get a meeting with the head, captain, the chief, all of them together, due to where you're saying what's not going through the ordinance, but what is New Brunswick Police Department telling the residents, and what are they being charged with? So please, I hope you do get together and have a meeting together of what, what is the law, due to where, like I said, I've been a resident here 47 years, and like I said, due to where, what, too many different laws being said through this council and through New Brunswick Police Department, and it needs to be put under control, what is the real law? And thank you, I hope you will look into that.
Mr. Anderson?
Since you did bring up my name, I've never said that the noise ordinance doesn't exist. Said that the decibels are different after 10 o'clock, but the noise ordinance is 24/7. Decibels go down, that's what I said.
I will find the recording for you, that is not what you said.
Thank you. Yes.
Question, do the police chief live in New Brunswick?
I'll be able to answer that question, Mr. Shawne? Basically required to live in New Brunswick?
He's not required to live in New Brunswick, he was shot.
Yeah, that was the question. As a former police officer, it not only would be good for the community to have the police director or chief live in New Brunswick, and so we can, so he can get a feeling of New Brunswick revenue coming from the outside, because I live in the cities, nothing wrong with it, you know? So just having the police director come in from someplace else, chosen for whatever reason, but the shoe would fit better, you know? If he was living in New Brunswick, he can make a difference and be closer to the community and show some type of positive feeling about how we feel about New Brunswick, that it's not just a job, and somebody's getting paid, what, $220,000 a year? And they should have to show what they're doing for that money, you know? And I know you're sitting there, I didn't mean to say anything, I don't want to, you know, I'm just viewing these meetings, but believe me, I have a lot to say about New Brunswick.
Anybody else? Who wishes to address? The council, please, a specific ordinance only? Seen none?
Move the ordinance. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
We have ordinance 02, 092-402, it's an ordinance document and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Deco Sun Traffic, Chapter 10, Control, Traffic Control regulations. This is providing notice on the reference to Patterson Street. Do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or comments on these particular ordinance? Having none, we are preparing to open the public hearing on these ordinance only. We have up to five minutes, one per person, one time up. Any member of the public who wishes to address the council of these specific ordinance, please approach your counsel.
Hi, yes, would you please tell, tell me exactly in words, due to where on Patterson Street with these loading zones, are they going to be painted with yellow, yellow lines? And is this only for trucking loading zones? For example, I've seen videos, due to where, what? With ruckers and New Brunswick Police Department sitting on sidewalks where with these, with these loadings on. I'm pretty sure you've seen it on crime, crime, brother, crime lots as well, being, being placed, so please tell me, okay, you keep saying traffic and, and loading zones, and then also, will certain, certain people who, in certain areas, will they be allowed to participate, to park there after so hours, meaning just like you do over to, with United Methodist Church, how the volunteers can park there and, at, at no charge, that are serving over 150 people? So can you tell me fully, who, is this just going to be for loading, for trucks loading, or what? And then another situation, with these truck loading, due to where it's an issue with parking, wow, how they're blocking the crosswalk, due to where I have several pictures, due to, if I have to bring them in, due to where, I, I will, what, where people, literally, now that George Street is going, open now, literally have to go around in the street, due to where with these trucks blocking the walkway, which is very unsafe, so I think you, not, not, you passing something, instead of just keep saying yes, yes to everything, without investigating what's really going on in this, like I said, I have several pictures of, of this happening, so like I said, is it just going to be for the truck deliveries, loading zone, or, or what?
This is for Patterson Street, Mr. Valenti, if you could answer, I'm literally, I'm just, I'm just going to specific, hoping it's just on Patterson, but I know that this ordinance is only for Patterson Street, could you speak to that?
It's correct. This ordinance is actually making smaller the loading area that's immediately in front of the high, the skyline tower. We're shrinking the loading zone, giving a little more space for the prosecutors and the sheriffs on Patterson, but there'll also be two pay parking spots behind it, between there and the county administration building. So we're actually adding, in effect, we're adding parking and shrinking the loading zone, but this loading zone is not specific to any type of vehicle, it's really designed to do the pickups and drop-offs for the skyline tower, that's the intention of it.
So, so, okay, good to hear, I'm glad you just explained that now, due to, like I said, my, my situation, like I said, where also for these loading zones, due to where, what, for the New Brunswick Police Department or the Parking Authority, like I said, to stop these trucks from blocking the walkway and having someone to walk into, walk into the street, due to where, that's my main safety concern, but like I said, I know what I say to you guys goes in one ear and out the other, but eventually, I guess, do I have to bring in pictures to show what I'm saying? For example, it's becoming a serious situation, due to where, like I said, what, where for these trucks not respecting either by a fire hydrant or, like I said, blocking a, a walkway, that's my main concern. And please, like I said, and I'm just saying yes to everything, I think you should investigate things of what's going on for, for, for safety, thank you.
Can, can I have your motion to move the ordinance?
Motion. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Then we have ordinance 102-402, it's an ordinance document and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Deco Sun Traffic, Chapter 10, Point 12. This is in reference to school zones, we are adding at 15 miles per hour, releasing up, leaving school and just directions.
I move the ordinance setting down October 16, 2024, at 5:30 PM, same day of the afternoon. Second. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Ordinance 102-403, it's an ordinance document and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 16, now going in code, side by review, section, stormwater control ordinance, in reference to updates.
I move the ordinance setting down October 16, 2024, at 5:30 PM, same day of the afternoon. Second. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Ordinance 102-404, it's an ordinance provided for the 2024 General Capitol Improvement Program by and in the City of New Brunswick.
I move the ordinance setting down October 16, 2024, at 5:30 PM, same day of the afternoon. Second. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, and we have ordinance 102-405, and it, and ordinance provided for various improvements to the nervous system by leading the City of New Brunswick.
I move the ordinance setting down October 16, 2024, at 5:30 PM, same day of the afternoon. Second. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Then we have ordinance 102-406, it's an ordinance provided for various improvements to the sources by and in the City of New Brunswick.
I move the ordinance setting down October 16, 2024, at 5:30 PM, same day of the afternoon. Second. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Then we have, I'm going into resolutions. We have Resolution 1 to 47, held, number Resolution 12, 13, and 15 are held. At this time, we are preparing to have public comments on these resolutions, but we call to use of, and if any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or any comments on the resolutions, so. So at this time, we are preparing to open the meeting to public comment on the resolutions only. We have up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any members of the public who wish to speak on any of the resolutions, please approach your counsel. Just keep in mind that Resolution 12, 13, and 15 are held, so we are not discussing.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradville. Number 17 is renovations to engine fine, is that number one on Bartlett Street? Can you tell me what repairs are, renovations are proposed?
Is that the chief? Hi.
Oh, it is. Yeah, am I right, is it Bartlett Street?
Right, it's the community club, renovations are going to be, it's going to be reported on the exterior of the building, and, but, it's forbidden.
Another, okay. Thank you. I know that it's not the only firehouse that needs, needs repairs and upgrades. How about 23, the stormwater control ordinance update? What specifically is being changed? Does that have to do with the stormwater utility?
You know, Mr. John, if you could answer that question, please, give us an update on why these, Resolution 23?
Although, well, the fact that stormwater utility has nothing to do with it, these are some additional requests that were forward to act by EPA, and our work with them, it makes our ordinance slightly more restrictive than the E standard ordinance.
Restrictive in terms of not building stuff in areas where it's going to flood?
It doesn't speak specifically to that. It creates new definitions, it creates new limited areas, it reduces the amount of area that things, if you look at it more carefully, it, it makes our ordinance definitely much more restrictive regarding to, in any areas, not just areas where it is currently.
Got it. When you say restricted, you mean restricted in terms of development, or what's being, what's being restricted?
In terms of size of how, how much additional mitigation may be necessary, so the thresholds are lower now, all right? So say, for example, PP has a one acre threshold, we're bringing it back to three quarters of an acre. PP says quarter acre of new ordinance, we're bringing it back to, to an acre, for example.
Got it. And I'll also ask about the next one, this is AKA Camio LLC, if I'm not mistaken, this is Mr. Camioni's company, and he's going to be renewed to continue working a second job in the mayor's office through this contract, is that, that's correct?
Yes, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, he's correct, that it is Mr. Camioni, and he will be renewing the contract as we demonstrate.
Okay.
Well, I will say, I did, did avail myself of his services and reached out when I had a problem in my neighborhood that I thought, you know, the mayor's office could help with, and he, he was able to help, so I hope that he was able to do that for a lot of people, thank you.
Good afternoon here. Anybody else for the public wishes to address the council of your resolutions only?
Hi, yes, that's where, number nine, if you can tell me a little more detail of what's going on in this one?
Oh, thank you, yes, I'm sorry. So the, with a large project like this, there's, there's a need to have a space where the materials can be laid down prior to coming to the city, this has been an ongoing relationship we're reviewing.
What is the work that's going to be done down there?
No, it's not, it's going to store some equipments and some of the things we have been doing it for probably like?
We deal with it, they can't, they do.
They can't, so this is just, they're not doing it work, it's just that New Brunswick, they're asking for permission to store or just place some of that equipment there, wow.
Well, hey, would you give me a location, like what part of, what part of Wood Park, due to where, even though we've been under a drought, less rain, how, I'm, I'm pretty sure some of you got, what the coastal advisories are, I'm like, wow, it didn't rain in over three weeks, but wow, how that river came in very high, the Racton River came in very high again, so what, what is the location?
Mr. Stevens?
It's right off of 18, so that's easy drop-off, easy entrance, it's not, it's not really in the park.
So close to New Street, and closer to where the New, New Street is?
No, it's on the bridge, yes.
Hold on. Mr. Valenti has?
It's the area, the area adjacent to Route 27 and 18 where the old police headquarters used to be.
Okay.
You've seen some trucks stayed here in the past.
Yes, all right, that sounds, sounds better, better over there, like I said, yeah, that part is a little better. I think it was one, one more, not, I, and that's far as with 23, once again, with the stormwater control ordinance update, wow, with this update, like I said, what, would this commit, would this include any more, what, would people seeing a change on their water bill, paying, making payments?
That, this, this resolution has nothing to do with that, please, anyway.
Oh, okay, I'll let it go. Then the last one is 25, with, with trees, due to where, can you give me the locations, or have been associated locations?
Mr. Valenti, this is the share, please, purchasing. This is, I don't know.
Specific 20, 25?
Yeah, electrical maintenance.
This is for electrical maintenance, has nothing to do with trees.
It has nothing to do with the trees, it's just me.
The tree.
It's just that, that's the part.
Okay. I misunderstood, okay, you laughed on that one. All right, all right, thank you.
Anybody else for the public, please, specific resolutions only?
Yes, I have a question about number 22. I'm just curious as to what the motivation is for buying these new vehicles? It sounds like to me that a lot of people in the community have certain issues with the police department, and I don't really see how spending this sort of money is going to help alleviate those concerns, especially considering that it's, you know, $92,000, $9,200,000 is not cheap or anything, and it just seems like there's a lot of other issues in the community that could be better serviced with that kind of money.
Mr. Horvath, would you like to answer that question?
We have to be able to respond to emergencies.
Yes, please.
These vehicles are part of the replacement program, so as vehicles are retired, vehicles run three shifts a day, like four hours a day, and has, and retired and replaced by like.
So they start using, if it was needed, would not be, within the reservation.
So is there a shortage of vehicles, or is this sort of routine?
Replacing, he just said that we're replacing older vehicles that we, that we need to replace, because they have been already expired, they use, or that might sell we have now.
Just out of curiosity, is repairing those vehicles for a cheaper price, is that an option?
I'm pretty sure I stopped if that comparison, Mr. Stevens?
These vehicles are replaced when they did, it was called end of life, they've been properly maintained and repaired, they're no longer reliable, if there's a certain standard in terms of mileage and use.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public to give you to the resolutions? Seen none?
Move the resolutions. Second. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Thank you.
Before we? Sorry.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. So before we go into the public portion of the
So before we go into the public portion of the meeting, I just wanna give some old things and, um, that I need to do prior to, or some that I, I haven't, I was in here at the last meeting, uh, so I have some old things on that. At the last meeting, there was a question focused as regarding the water before and why it was late. Um, I was reflecting on this after I, after the meeting, then I needed to go away from work, so I, and I believe that we have answered that question before, but I already stated that it was in the part of the answers that Mr. Cradaville had received from, um, from the city, uh, or the information officer. Nonetheless, you know, nonetheless, uh, although I believe that the response I've been giving in previous meetings, in, in the talks, this is a talk that has been given, and we have heard a lot, um, the simple answer to that is, it was that it was a, a, a report delay error. The report was submitted, we've been accepted the report, and there's no further actions needed at this point. So I hope that I'm not gonna address that anymore, I think that we had already answered to the best of our ability, so I just wanted to post that out there. There was a question asked also about the pedestrian safety initiatives that the city has done, so in the last five years, the city has made a number of improvements, and those improvements include, for not limited, to roadway improvements, sidewalk improvements, including in some areas, they have put AA compliant ramps and sidewalks and crosswalks, traffic signal improvement, L T pedestrian signals, so they have been, um, throughout the city. And there's a lot of areas, but I will tell you that there's some of them are Comstock, uh, Joyce Kimber Avenue, Comstock, Nichols Avenue, Lewis Street, uh, Hamilton, so there is, uh, we had done a significant amount of improvement related to pedestrian safety. Uh, there was a question about the O P O settlement, public policy was gonna, uh, was planning for, for in developing for, with this fund, so Mr. Davis, if you could, it was an update, an answer to this?
So the O P O funds are scheduled to settle in, but the city's been receiving payments as, as been evident in our recent resolutions to add to our budget. These funds, like small grants or revenue, will be considered in budget process as of 2025. That process has, has begun, as, uh, we've started that.
Thank you. And then, um, as you may know, you don't know, uh, we have experienced some recent shootings here in our city. We are deeply concerned about those incidents, I have been in communication with Chief Saye, one Deputy Chief Bobalina, throughout, and as, as is customary with this council, will not make any comments as these incidents are active investigation. What I will say is that these incidents seem to be, that they're not random. Moreover, moreover, the incidents that occur on Comstock and Jones Avenue appear to be related one to one another. The police are maintaining presence in the area by sending patrols and deploying the neighborhood police team. I can assure you that the police are actively investigating these incidents, and that our community's safety is a priority for all of us here. And lastly, I would like to invite everyone, as I was saying, as I stated, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and December, October 5th, is the 22nd Annual March Against Domestic Violence in the City of New Brunswick, so invite you to come. This year is gonna be at the St. Joseph Roman Catholic Church, uh, on Maple, Maple Street. So come out and support, and let it know that Domestic Violence is not welcome, and is in our community. We have been doing this for twenty-two, um, years, and this is a personal, um, issue to me, so I invite you to come out and support, and support, uh, the community, come out and march with us. At this time, we are going to prepare the floor for public comments. As I do in every meeting, I advise that this is not a question and answer period. This is, um, just a comment. For the comment, you have five minutes per person, one time up, to come, and before I do that, any of my colleagues, do you have any questions or any comments before we go into the public? Sorry.
Good evening, Marge Cerver, two, two, Comstock Street. That name should bring a bad, Comstock Street, okay. That's the reason I'm here tonight, is because there's a shooting around the corner from me, that I was not told about. Okay, I, I know, I know, the only reason I found out about it was because my neighbor sent me the rectors notification about it, okay? I am seventy-two years old, I live alone, and I walk my dog. Okay, on the night in question, I was walking my dog around eleven-thirty when this all occurred. I did not hear the, the shot, okay? But it would've been nice to know the next day that this was going on. All I knew is that you had a community service van or something parked on Comstock Street, and then you had this police car driving around till after midnight with their lights on, going around the block, but I had no idea why, okay? I, until I got that notification from Rutgers on Tuesday. I thought that as a taxpayer and a property owner, that I should be aware of anything like this going on in my neighborhood, okay? It's not just students on my block. They were all aware of it, I talked to them, okay? But there are homeowners on the block that I believe should have been told about this, okay? You don't have to give me details, but at least say, you know, stay in your house because we're investigating, et cetera, et cetera. But nothing, nothing! And that's why I'm here tonight. I haven't been here in a long time, you haven't seen me, you're probably thankful for that. But, um, I'm, I'm here tonight mainly because of that, because I don't think it's a service to the community of New Brunswick, not to tell them when this, when these incidents go on. I also didn't melt out the other incidents in my neighborhood either, of course, because it's so top secret in the City of New Brunswick. I don't know what the mayor is trying to prove, I don't know what the city, the police department is trying to prove, but I do know that they're really chicken and lock, because I, you know, I'm so, I'm so angry about this, I don't know if you can tell or not, but, because it's my safety, and how can I be safe in my home when I don't know what the hell is going on in my neighborhood? Would you tell me that? Would you explain to me how I, how I can be safe in my house, how I can be safe walking my dog? The good news was, I was, I walked my dog on Sunday night, I went away from Jones Avenue, not towards Jones Avenue, because God forbid, I could have been one of those people shot. You think that's fair? You think that's, I mean, I can't believe it. I just can't believe that. And you know what? If my neighbor hadn't sent me that, I wouldn't have any idea why this police car was going around my block, over and over and over, there was like, and I tried, I tried to stop him, he couldn't stop. Isn't that nice? So who are the police, who's the police department serving in New Brunswick? The public or not? That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anybody else with a public?
Uh, yes, then, or continue on with Mr. Davis, due to where actually, and it's time to say, wow, around six shootings, that wasn't listed-
Right.
-of last, last month, due to where, come on! Like I said, New Brunswick, some people make excuses, oh, we're short of staff. If you know we're short of staff, stop building more apartments, allowing more people to come in here, until you reach enough staff. But like I said, come on, as a resident of forty-seven years, New Brunswick was never like this. I would just wanna start off with George Street reopened. Have any of you noticed something since it's been open? I'm not gonna kill my timing, wait for your answer, but see, this is how the Lord works, meaning, wow, like I told you, it wasn't meant to close George Street. Wow, this weekend, past weekend, with the first two days, we really had rain since George Street was closed, and I think the Lord is trying to tell you something, due to every time it was open, how many bad storms and windstorm we gotten. Then the next thing, please, I never got an answer, did what, did the city take care of the rats in the park? Did you tell Walgreens about all the rats? I see another dead rat in the parking lot today. But like I said, as well, due to where what, I almost had a, I screamed, due to where I told Mr. Dean, I'm not gonna be going, I, I'm in charge of his medication, I was told by a social worker to, to do it, I don't charge Mr. Dean. But I told him, I'm not coming over there getting scared. Did he pay the three hundred and twenty-five dollars today for outdoor exterminator? You need to start having a lot of these locations, even these owners, like I said, rats running up, down the broad day, like I posted a lot of them on TV, due to where, come on, New Brunswick was never like this. And also, due to where park rangers, what is this, due to where I told you, they were, I was told that they were hired to help out with Narcan, look at the parks and wow, see an article, ooh! Wow, now they're starting to become police officers? So like I said, what, were they undercover police the whole time? When I said, ooh, I don't see them in the park, and I mentioned, due to where the meeting, ooh, why am I seeing them on Route 18, Route 1, there is no park in New Brunswick on there? So was that some type of scam the city did to make people think? Then also, please, enough of these squatters, due to where, yes, they're back over there on Oxford Street, Hell Street, wow, you knocked down B and P, due to where, yes, I had pictured Mr. Dean cleaning up all the garages over there? Come on, enough of these damn squatters, due to where, like I said, New Brunswick was never like this. Now, getting back to what, with the, with the police department, wow, I just talked to Channel 12 News yesterday, and I will be working out something with my lawyer, you tried to make me out to be a damn criminal, but wow, it's been eight months. Why won't you turn over the damn camera, all of the cameras, due to where, what? Where you said that I did something illegal, what? For me to carry mace, due to where longer than three-point-five ounces, I checked with my law, due to where what? I can't be charged with anything. Due to where, just like Suzanne Secor-Lonoy, I tried to be charged with using a taser, long as I was told that it was used for self-defense, which I had the video, what? Like I said, due to where, you wanna make me a damn criminal, you're gonna pay a price, and then the insurance company gonna say, oh my, since New Brunswick and the prosecutor found that, due to where what? That what? I, they said that I, I, I did something wrong, due to where what? That I don't have a lawsuit? Bullshit! Due to where New Brunswick is gonna pay, due to where what? I'm suffering, tearing my arm in three locations, dislocated nerve damage. Now, I signed for the papers through City Park, I named the young ladies, due to where, okay, I get them, they're all blurred, and oh my, you wanna pay a price for Alexandra Yunus, who was suspended last year for lying on a police report? Oh, what do I have, the body cameras, what, blocking him out, what he damn did, did illegal? Oh, what is Captain Shaw, due to her covering up evidence? What, did I press charges on damn Tracy? Was she in charge of the lawyer section? What, I had the, my public defender, the lawyer, and all, due to where what? Why won't she turn over the damn evidence? And like I said, this is gonna go to another step, I will be filing another lawsuit against New Brunswick. You wanna say that I committed a damn crime? Prove your point, that I did something. Like I said, what, it's been eight months now, why won't you turn over the damn evidence? So like I said, due to where now, like I said, I'm gonna get, take this further, due to where, what? I have all the evidence with Sergeant Martinez lying, I have the evidence with Captain Shaw lying, due to where I have the evidence with, uh, uh, Ms. Tracy lying, due to where I came down here September 3rd, with Mrs. Conacasty to the office, she's gonna lie, and I spoke here on it, saying, ooh, I don't see any charges anymore, due to where what? You don't need the cameras anymore. What? Where you keep them lying, covering up, due to where, what, what, what? Like I said, due to where New Brunswick knew there was wrong, so New Brunswick Police Department is nothing but a piece of shit!
Why don't you bounce, Mr. Davis? Much obliged, yes, talking with his friends, please. Thank you.
Good evening once again, Charlie Cradaville. Uh, I wanna pick up on something that, uh, Marge Cerver brought up, uh, the lack of transparency about shootings. I know over time, we've talked about this issue a lot. The city currently takes an approach where if someone is shot, if a person is hit by the gunfire, that, uh, the city will use the city government Facebook and Twitter pages to share the information. I don't think that that is the best way to reach everyone. You have a NICSIL alert system that I know many more people, uh, are, many people are signed up for, and they can get text or email, uh, alerts, but you don't use it for crimes. And I don't understand why, I've brought it up before, I know other channels do, and it would make sense. You know, there's a lot of, of, of better ways to communicate than only using those two social media platforms, and I would encourage you to, uh, you know, find more channels to spread the word, because obviously, you know, uh, residents who want the information aren't always getting it, because maybe we don't go on Facebook every day. Also, in terms of transparency, I brought this up last time, the city has stopped publishing the motor vehicle crash reports on the website. At the last meeting, Captain Hoover told us that there's a new law that quote prohibits us from releasing unredacted accident reports, and I reviewed the statute, I don't believe that's the case, but, um, maybe you could ask Captain Hoover if, like, an individual is involved in a motor vehicle crash, or is he saying that, that they can't release to the individual in the crash, the full unredacted report? Can you ask Captain Hoover? Okay, well, uh, yeah, I asked you to review that, and I'll note that, you know, since you stopped posting those, I did make an Oprah request for all the crash reports in August, and I was told I can get them for the low-o price of two-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, so I don't think that's transparency. I think that, um, you know, whether it's redacted or unredacted, the information should be shared and made public. I'll note again, it's the only reason I was able to find out that an elected city councilwoman had been involved in a drunk-driving car crash. And that information would not have made it to the public but for the police proactively releasing the crash reports. Uh, you know, I'm not a wealthy man, I don't have, uh, two-hundred-and-sixty bucks to spend on, on, uh, a hundred-and-ninety-seven crash reports. I think that, um, the police department needs to do better in terms of transparency. This is a big setback, a big rollback, and I think it's being done under, in an incorrect interpretation of the, the, uh, the Oprah, um, which my understanding does not prohibit, um, releasing things on websites. Speaking of, uh, uh, Ethics Board, I asked about the matters with Glenn Fleming, and I was told at the last meeting, quote, "There's no need for a resolution, no need, since the board memorialized that in a public meeting and there was a record created." But I filed a request for the meeting minutes, and I was told that, uh, even though this took place in 2018, that the transcript is not prepared, and now you can read the transcript. What, what record was TK Chami referring to when he said, uh, there was a record created? Can you ask Mr. Chami that question?
Can, I'm just writing? Keep on, was that-
I, I understand. Are you gonna ask him after my remarks, or?
I'm listening, go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah.
I'll try to lose you time.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate it. I am also deeply concerned about the shooting incidents by my count, we've got, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, just in September alone, um, one, two, three, four, six victims, and, uh, many unsolved. So I do think we need proactive updates and more information. We shouldn't have to ask or bring it up. I'm glad you brought it up tonight, but, uh, I think that, um, yeah, we, we deserve, deserve more information about this serious problem and what our leaders are doing about it. I also have to go back to Glenn Fleming. Is his absence today, uh, excused? Do you know why he's not here?
He is excused, he's excusing himself.
So he told you he's not gonna be here for some reason? Okay. I, I have to bring to your attention that within the past week, the judge has ordered him to pay fifteen thousand dollars to his accuser in the sexual harassment case that's been pending against him, I'm not sure if you're aware of that. But I can also reveal that more than thirty-five thousand dollars in taxpayer funds has been expended, uh, helping to defend him in that sexual harassment case, and I think that's inappropriate, he has not accounted for it, and I think he owes us an explanation for his resignation. Thank you.
Mr. Chami, would you like to address, uh-
Uh, Mr. Council President, I can address that. I told Mr. Cradaville, if I believe at the last meeting, that it was memorialized on the record, and it was. He asked for meeting minutes, apparently we have no minutes that we can locate the supply. I assumed the transcript was ordered by Mr. Jost, who was the board of ethics attorney back then, he recently closed his practice. I asked Mr. Jost for the transcript, he said, "I never ordered it." So that's why we're in the process of trying to order it, uh, trying to obtain it, um, the court reporting services, and if and when we do, we'll supply it to Mr. Cradaville. My statement is accurate, there was a record, there was a transcript, there was a court reporter, everyone was sworn to tell the truth in connection with the hearing. So hopefully we'll get it, and I thought mistakenly that it was ordered back in 2018, but it was not, it was not in Mr. Joseph's file.
Mr. Hoover, um, Captain Hoover, would you like to address the crash report information at this time?
Well, I reported, well, I reported it at the last meeting, and it's as accurate as I understand it. If you have specific questions, please, you have my email address, and I'd be happy to, I always answer you.
Thank you. Any thanks?
Hi there, Aprilne Klaus, um, so a few things that I wanted to bring up, following what you had said, President Escobar, on the latest of the lead service line replacement plan. Please correct me if I interpret this wrong, but I said it was a, a report submission error?
It's late.
A report submission delay?
Yes, an error, yeah, right, maybe.
So, I mean, and again, I, I don't wanna characterize this inaccurately, so please do correct the record, if this is not correct, but it, that sounds like just the official language for, who's, for God, is that?
That's what I'm saying, and I, and I'm gonna say, I, I said my statement already, and I'm not gonna say anything else about that.
Right, and I-
Right, and I'm...
You can interpret it your way. I'm gonna say I'm not gonna say...
No, I don't wanna interpret it. I'm not trying to interpret it incorrectly. So if that's incorrect, I would like to know what is correct. And you're saying that my interpretation is incorrect, and you won't, you won't tell me what...
I start by my statement.
Right, your statement is, your statement is three words, right? That link, report delay error, right? And that does not actually answer any questions.
And I think that the most important part of all of this is that we have got the report.
Right, almost that you're playing it right.
In a way, there's nothing wrong with it, and it was accepted, and there was no any further action. Otherwise, I'm sorry. So you must just say, "Good evening."
Again, I don't wanna characterize anything inaccurately, but that it really does just sound like someone forgot to do what they were supposed to do, and that's why I'm blaming them. It's due to a great... Or it could have been another situation.
I can't be inferred that that's what happened. It could have been another situation that happened.
Right, and I...
So it could be many things.
People have been asking about this for, you know, several, several months. Yeah, so there's no, there's no clarity. So again, I don't wanna have an unfairly negative interpretation, but lacking any other information that seems like what you are trying to not say, and maybe it's why it's taken such a grueling, multi-month process to get any sort of answer at all on this.
You are clear. I decided, we are, you know, we cannot wait to decide, right? But go ahead. Anything else?
On a related subject, I just wanna, I have heard that the, in the, you know, quest to find out if there's lead service lines in New Brunswick, that there's so far been two found on Hamilton Street, Lewis Street, is that accurate?
What was it? Tell me again, the service?
Lead service lines. What the whole, the whole project is to find, you know, if there are lead service lines in New Brunswick, and if so, how many, where are they? My understanding is that there have been two found so far, is that accurate?
I'm taking the information.
Okay.
Taking that.
And then as referenced by quite a few previous speakers, we obviously have seen a lot of gun violence this year, and in particular, just in the last month, and frankly, a lot of it in the neighborhood that I live in. And I think, you know, a lot of people are obviously concerned about that. I know that you responded to an earlier request about, you know, acquiring the police chief to come in and provide proactive updates, but we'll think about it. But what I would be interested to know is, you know, can you commit that you will ask him to please come in at least, at least once, right? At least just come in for, you know, a meeting next month, for example, and provide some type of updates on what the police department is doing in the state of crime in New Brunswick? Can you make that request?
Again, we have, like I said before, we have representation here in our meetings by Captain Hoover, who has the ability to do updates, answer any questions when we're telling. And if we have any answers, because sometimes we don't have any answers, right? So I...
But then I wasn't...
I have, I have...
Question, question.
May I finish?
Sure, sure.
So what I, I'm not gonna, we asking him, I commit to ask my fellow council members, if they base on consensus, if they would like for that to happen, I would talk to the chief of police. So that's my commitment to my fellow council members. And again, I hear you, and I hear those that are asking for the presence of the chief of police. But I think that we have a very good representative, you know, representative here to the police department, Captain Hoover. And he has been more than willing to answer when he's able questions, and even assist. Some of the committee members that come here with some challenges personally he has gone. So I would commit to give updates, you know, like I did today. I keep, I have very good communication with the chief and the deputy chief. And when this happens, by the way, I live in the same neighborhood. So I am committed to continue asking, and if there's any for me to do an update here related to those, I would make those updates. But again, I believe that we have more than a capable person here to be able, for the police department to be able to answer or to give, you know, if needed, an update or represent the police department. Not necessarily has to be the chief of police, you have somebody here. But thank you, time is up.
And I can say, we're...
And to be fair, I'm gonna give you three more minutes, because I took some of your time.
And I don't, I don't need a whole three more minutes, but I do wanted to say that on prior occasions when there's been concerns about other specific issues related to other specific departments, what you have said is, you know, that you would be happy to request that the heads of those various departments come in and provide an update when that is something that the public has expressed an interest in and more concerned over. And you have done that on multiple occasions, and it has been very helpful. So all I'm asking is, can you do the same thing that you have already done with other departments, just with the police department?
I would ask Captain Hoover to do that, absolutely.
Right, if you would rather ask him than ask the police chief, you know, if you will stand up here and provide, you know, three to five minutes of updates, then...
Very good.
And any of that would be helpful.
Very good.
Anybody else from the public? Say yes.
Moshe Tojars? Second. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin? Councilmember Saporlo? Yes, Councilbacker.